It's in your computer.
Cool. It is? Okay, we'll open up this regular meeting June 25, 2007 with a salute to the flag. Will the town clerk kindly call the roll, please?
Councilor Edwards?
Here.
Councilor Ouda?
Present.
Councilor Maderas?
Here.
Councilor Durfee?
Here.
Councilor Carroll?
Here.
Councilor Costa?
Here.
Councilor Bowlin?
Yeah.
All present.
Thank you very much. Before we start the approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Maderas, I think you have a proclamation tonight?
We have a proclamation. Before that, just a little bit about the person that this is for. The Tiverton Town Council wishes to present to Stephen Rice our gift and grateful appreciation for the endless hours spent videotaping town council meetings and workshops. For copying the videos, providing the general public with access to review, to be able to review the meetings, for his talent and expertise in assisting with setting up the equipment and handling the PA system.
Come on.
For his talent and expertise in assisting with setting up the equipment and handling the PA system at the annual financial town meetings, saving the town literally thousands of dollars while being compensated only a small sty pen. And for his sincere dedication of time, ability, talent, and patience in providing this invaluable service for both the town and the general public, sincere thanks to Stephen Rice. Steve. We have a certificate, which are certificate of appreciation is presented to Stephen Rice in grateful recognition of outstanding public service faithfully rendered to the town of Tiverton, Rhode Island by providing the community with excellent service, videoing and copying the town council meetings and workshops by order of the town council of the town of Tiverton, Rhode Island this 25th day of June 2007. Signed, President of Tiverton Town Council, Louise Durfee. Congratulations.
Don't throw that away.
Where's your tuxedo?
Congratulations.
That is the first time I have seen Mr. Rice smile as broadly as that. The, Mr. Bowman, would you kindly read the?
Madam President, it seems our agenda says that the Bay Street Moratorium extension resolution is prior to the consent agenda.
Alrighty.
I move that we extend the Bay Street Moratorium for an additional six months.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Solicitor?
I didn't know if there was, this isn't a public hearing type thing, but I didn't know if there was anyone in the audience who wanted to speak to it or not.
We did, the town solicitor did invite the Director of DEM as well as the Attorney General. They, I believe, have notified the Clerk's office that they would come at a later time. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak, who has been invited to speak on this matter? So, Phila?
Well, I'm here if you have any questions for me, but obviously it's at a higher level than what I'm at in terms of what you're looking for in terms of responses. The Senate did have a hearing last Tuesday.
That would be good. Introduce yourself.
My name is Walter S. Phila, Jr. I'm the State Senator representing Tiverton, Warren, and Bristol, and I reside at 51 Overhill Road in Warren, Rhode Island. That being said, I was invited to today's meeting. I didn't know that the Attorney General or the DEM officials were not going to be here, but obviously it's imperative that they be here to provide the information you need in terms of the moratorium and in case they can answer any questions relative to their engagement letter with Southern Aspie and Brennan and the work they've accomplished up to this point. All I know is that the State Senate had a public hearing last Tuesday relative to this particular law firm, and the billing information that we received from Southern Aspie and Brennan amounted to $736,000 of expenditures by that environmental law firm through the end of April. For instance, in February, they billed the state $180,000. In March, they billed the state $225,000, and then in April, they billed the state $118,000. What the billing for May and June are, I don't know. At this juncture, all the State Senate was doing is to try to provide some sort of in-depth analysis of what were the goals of the particular law firm and DEM and how long this particular case would move on. Obviously, due to the confidentiality of the case itself, they could not provide us with those information.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. There's nobody else, but, yes. Oh.
I'm Bob Van Der Slay from the Health Department. I'd just like to say that the conditions that warranted this moratorium being imposed haven't changed so that it has served a public health function that we support and will continue to support.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful to have that information as we continue to extend the moratorium. It's been close to five years, so it's your testimony. I'm sorry I didn't recognize you immediately.
May I just, Mr. Van Der Slay, while you're here, if I could just ask a question. Do you know, does the Health Department have any plans to do any independent epidemiological testing in the area?
We've got surveillance databases that we can and do use to evaluate that. As far as a separate study, no. So we have, it's a hospital large data, and that database used to be used in the past. We're working with the residents now about coordinating care with one physician to get, and have one person see several people to see if there's some commonality in the whole experience. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I ask Senator Phila a question?
Certainly may.
Senator, is it your opinion that the members of the Senate and the House are familiar with the circumstances surrounding the need for this moratorium? I know it has not been a legislative matter. It's been DEM, the Attorney General, whatever, but I just want to?
Personally, I believe as a whole they're aware of the seriousness of this matter other than those individuals that are on the Senate Finance Committee that heard testimony from the anned group on Tuesday night. In my presentation on the actual bill that was submitted by Representative Ameral and Senator Green, I made reference to the fact that there are 103 utility waste sites in the state of Rhode Island. So though this may be one of the largest waste, utility waste sites in the state, it's not in any way the only one. As I mentioned at the Senate hearing, that in one senator's district, there are 21 utility waste sites in Providence. And as far as Westley, Senator Algiers, we had five industrial sites.
Thank you, Mr. Phila.
Senator, do you know offhand, has it possibly been discussed of, I know that the fines are outstanding, and obviously that's going to be a continued legal battle, but expediting once those funds come in, is it something where those funds could potentially be used to begin the testing? Because as I understand, the only way people are going to be able to get out of the moratorium area is to be able to do the testing, which is very expensive for them to do themselves. If somebody looking at, and obviously the state doesn't have, is in a difficult financial situation, but are those fines that are going to be assessed or have been assessed and just haven't been paid yet by the, whatever the company is called today, is it possible to take that money so that there are funds available to begin testing on some of the, to determine where the borderline of that moratorium should be?
Well, unfortunately, the legislation to increase the fines was not approved by the General Assembly. So that was part of, I believe, DEM's emphasis in terms of moving forward. I believe they're still committed to the project. To what extent, I don't know. You'd have to ask then. That's why at this particular juncture, I cannot provide information relative to what the Governor's Office and DEM is going to do in terms of this particular piece of legislation, I mean litigation.
I just hadn't heard of any, of any potential sources of funds to be able to start that testing because obviously it's going to be an expensive juncture. But if it's something that, if that money, if that's something that could be considered in this process, it just seems that would at least give us some potential revenue to be able to begin the testing at some point.
Well, again, it's in DEM's ballpark.
Right. Thanks.
Well, ultimately, they would like to have Southern Union do the testing and put it where it should be.
Yeah, and again, that was, that was part of the process as we were moving along prior to litigation is to try to get as much testing as we could before the two sides were not discussing the matter any longer and then into the legal arena.
Thank you, Senator.
State Rep.
Thank you, Madam President. John Loughlin, 105 Preservation Way, Tiverton, Rhode Island. State Rep. for Tiverton Little Compton Enforcements. I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the amount and breadth of work that was done by Representative Ameral to try and get those fines increased. He basically was the prime sponsor of that legislation. He worked it really hard. At 1:00 in the morning, he was in meetings with the Majority Leader and the Governor's Office to come up with compromise language that was acceptable to the House. Apparently, that language wasn't acceptable across the hall, but I just felt it was important to let you know how hard he's worked on this issue and the amount of time that he put in and how hard he was, he was pushing to get that done. And I'm also available for any questions. Thank you.
We are going to continue to set up, make certain that the Director of DEM, in his court, is lies, and/or the Attorney General. We'd like to have that meeting with them. It will be an open meeting. So as soon as we know, we will be in touch with you. Dr. Van Der Slay, thank you for coming.
Madam President.
All those in favor of the motion to extend for six months, December 31st, all those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The consent agenda, please.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes from the town council meeting of May 29, 2007, minutes from the town council, June 11, 2007, receipt of the minutes from the following boards and commissions: Landfills Subcommittee, School Committee, Waste Water Management Commission, Planning Board. Correspondence received from Ann and Claire Page regarding Black Goose Cafe, received from Rhode Island DEM regarding draft septic system regulations. David Roberts, tax assessor, approval of abatement.
Hold on a second. As you leave the meeting, would you just be as quiet as you can be? Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
Tax collector requests authorization for extension of the grace period on automobile tax bills. The town clerk advertised RFQ labor council is directed by council on May 14, and the town treasurer, approval of betterment fees for FY08 from Village of Mount Hope Bay. Fee required, no fee required. Revenue exceeds annual obligation.
Are there any changes, withdrawals from the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to ask for the withdrawal of Item 3B, received from Rhode Island DEM regarding draft septic system regulation.
That has been removed. Anything else?
Motion approved the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Costa?
Yeah, Madam President. With regards to that item, I only have a quick question. That's a rather important item for us, I think. My question is, did all the members of the town government here, such as the Waste Water Management Commission, the Planning Board, the Building Inspector, they all get copies of this, of this letter from Rhode Island DEM? There's a, there's a workshop on Wednesday, June 27, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Portsmouth, and they would be looking for comments and questions, and they have in their letters stated that they will incorporate whatever testimony is given in the new rules and regulations. I just think it's important that the departments in Tiverton that are, are tied to this business of septic systems might want to attend that, that conference, but you should get a copy of the letter so you know the contents of it. That's, that's all.
I know that our, Mr. Berg is on the Advisory Committee that works with DEM on draft regulations. That is, okay, that, I'm sure the town clerk will see to it if that takes place. Yes.
Motion to accept. On A, 3, 3B, I'm sorry. Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is, is a input matter with regard to Shore Road. And let me say at the outset, Peter Regiro, who has been the attorney for the town on this matter, could not be at the meeting. And it's very likely at the end, after all the input and after people have their say, that we will take this under advisement pending a meeting with him for his final advice in connection with the matter. So I just, I didn't, the reason why I say that, I didn't want everybody to hang around waiting for the council to make a decision. We will take all comments under advisement and meet with him at a date certain. So who would like to lead off? Mr. Bowman, would you like to lead off?
I guess I would volunteer.
It is the practice here to identify yourself as attorney for blah, blah.
Name is John Bowman. I live at 22 Great Road, Barrington, Rhode Island. I am the attorney for Kimberly Walts and Elaine Barboza, who are residents of 18 Shore Road in Tiverton, Rhode Island. I'm not sure precisely, Mr. Durfee, what kind of input the council is looking for. I do have a couple of observations to make. I think for at least 54 or 55 years, the town and the residents of this particular subdivision have been treating the existing Shore Road as an established road for purposes of laying out house lots, obtaining building permits from the town of Tiverton, and all of the normal municipal trappings you would expect to see. In fact, I have heard anecdotally, but I haven't seen evidence of it, that some people have had surveys done which are inconsistent with the survey that was obtained by the town. I'm not suggesting that the Class 1 survey the town did is incorrect, but I'm simply noting that there are some residents who have in their possession, from what I hear, surveys which are inconsistent with what the town survey shows. And you have 17 lots which are now, in part, or in one degree or another, are now, in theory, owned by the town of Tiverton. And that's the paper street as shown by Mr. New's survey. Obviously, this has a dramatic effect on the title of each of the people whose lots are affected. They can't mortgage their property. They can't sell their property except under adverse conditions. It begs for resolution by the town, one way or the other. The town is certainly never going to knock down all these houses and pave this street. That will never happen, one way or the other. But since it has been the situation since the 1950s, it suggests that the town should be working with the residents to find a resolution that addresses what are pretty severe title problems for these individual residents. And I would also suggest that the town is in the best position to spearhead that effort. The town has already engaged and obtained the Class 1 survey. They're in the best, the best position to work with that surveyor, to take the next couple of steps that will be required to essentially parcel out this paper street back to the owners who thought they had owned it for anywhere from one to 50-something years. Mr. Durfee, that's all of the input I have, but I, if something comes up, if I may have your permission to address the council later? Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Letman. I'm an attorney. I have an office in Fall River. I represent Augusto D'Sar, lives at 32 Shore Road. And he's one of the 12 people or so. There are 18, 17, 18 properties, but there are 12 individual owners, and he's one of the people that has the paper street. The town's interest in that street go right through his house that he's lived in for more than 30 years. And I could echo some of what Mr. Bowman mentioned as far as, as the fact that there really isn't much of a question about what the problem is, but with that survey that was done, that the town had done recently, placing the road, the 1893 road where it is as a paper street going through these properties, think in the, in the logical conclusion that that creates serious title problems for everyone that has property in the path, in the path of that paper street. The real issue becomes not so much what the problem is, but obviously how to solve it. And Mr. Bowman suggested the town take the lead in solving that problem, and I could echo that. Question is, how that's going to happen? And it's real, what really has to happen is an abandonment of the 1893 platted road so that the people, the 12 or so property owners that have this title problem, not of their own making, can, can reach a, so that, so they could be free to either sell or refinance their properties and can lift this cloud on their title that kind of freezes them in place with a problem that they didn't create. So, and what I, I believe the town should take the lead, and my estimate of, I've been advised that the estimate of how that, the cost of doing that would be somewhere in the range of maybe $5,000 to $10,000 for legal expenses and redrafting deeds and advertising. But I think because none of the people who own the property that created this problem and, I'm suggesting that the way to solve it is have the town step up, petition to abandon the property and to assume the cost of, I think for it to fall on the, on the shoulder, financial shoulders of these residents would be an undue hardship to them. So that would be the approach, at least as far as my position on behalf of Mr. D'Sar, and if there's any, I'd like, like Mr. Bowman, if, as we proceed with the hearing, and there's a number of people here who own property, who have real concerns that they want to express to the council, I may want to follow up some comments or put some comments, if that's okay.
That's fine, but I think perhaps the council may have some questions for you, perhaps working with Mr. Bowman. The town has already spent untold thousands of dollars on this problem, and these questions are not original with me.
Right.
Okay? But it would be helpful to the council, for the council to know is, one, are your clients interested in abandonment? And two, are they willing to assume the cost? You don't have to make a decision tonight, but you should perhaps tell us in writing whether you are willing to assume the cost of, one, the meets and bounds, the individual surveys.
Right.
Because at this point, the benefit to the town of spending that money probably doesn't exist. It does, it's important to your clients, and I think it would be interesting for us to know, according to what Mr. Regiro is advising us, is are you willing to step up to the plate to cover the costs of the abandonment? And that is something that we, I think, are entitled to know.
Right. As I said, I could only speak on behalf of Mr. D'Sar.
And you don't have to speak even tonight.
Tonight, but I will say I is interested in the abandonment of the road.
Okay. First question, clearly, my clients are in favor of abandonment, just right on the title issue. The second question, is premature, want to have, I don't know what the dollars are. I, let me, if I could ask, though, implied in your question is that the town would take the responsibility for the advertising and the abandonment process costs, but the individuals, at least what the concept is that you're floating is the individuals will be responsible for working with the surveyor to nail that.
As well as the, I mean, it would be the cost of the process, the abandonment, the advertising, as well as?
The advertising as well as the legal things?
Yes.
And the surveyor?
Yes. And when we meet with Mr. Regiro, that would be helpful information to have.
Do you have any, expect the time to meet with?
Well, we will get to that. He has given us some dates in his email to us this, this morning. So we will get to that before we leave the subject.
Fair. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Richard Hart, 4461 Main Road. I had a couple of comments, especially regarding what Mr. Bowman had said. Town residents, in my opinion, have not enjoyed free access to Shore Road. There's been signs that it is a private road. We've been given dirty looks, and there's dogs on long leases there that have prevented people from going there, the town residents. So I dispute that the town residents has been able to use free access and use Shore Road. I would also like to suggest that to kind of help us understand this, Three-Rod Way is one road, and Shore Road is another road. They're both different. One was laid out in, in 1893. The other was laid out in the development by Mr. Tremaine's plans. They are the, on the same property in some cases, and in other cases, completely different. And you cannot, at present, use Three-Rod Way to get to the other end of Three-Rod Way because of the houses blocking it. And also, I think the residents there, they're, all of the deeds, I'd like to read a portion of their deeds suggesting, in my opinion, that these are private roads. Because each deed says, "Together with the right to pass over and upon the roads as delineated on said plat for the purposes of ingress and egress to and from the herein granted premises, and also the right to use the beach and the shore for boating and bathing in common with other owners in the plat." This suggests to me that this is, these were intended in the Tremaine subdivision to be private and not public area. Because each deed says, "Together with the right to pass over and upon the roads as delineated on said platte for the purposes of ingress and egress to and from the herein granted premises, and also the right to use the beach and the shore for boating and bathing in common with other owners in the platte." This suggests to me that this is, these were intended in the Tremaine subdivision to be private and not public area, and Shore Road is not a public road. So, I'd just like to put in those couple of points.
Okay. Anybody else before we begin to set a meeting date with Mr. Regiro?
How you doing? My name's Bruce Lee Moe. I own property on 9 Lenny Street, which abuts Shore Road. I've lived there all my life, from 40, it's going to be 46. And that road has always been in the location that it's been in. And as far as people going down it and stuff, I've, you know, people do go down it, people that don't live there, it's a public road, it's always been that way. And I know people want to make that road private, some people want to make it private. To do that, you'd lose all your services, such as plowing, maintenance. And as far as paying for the advertisement and stuff for abandonment, I would have to say that that, you know, that's not fair for the residents that's there because we didn't create this problem. The lack of ambition from the town, not checking things out, is what started the problem. And then as they kept on giving building permits and all this other stuff, they created the problem. Now they expect the people that live there to pay for the problem, to fix the problem. And I think it's more of a town problem. I think the town should be paying for this, not the people down there. It doesn't seem like it's very fair to me. And I think it would be in the best interest of the town to do this because they have been taking care of that road for several years. And I think that would be a good argument, that once you start taking care of something where you tar it and pave it and plow it, and you've been doing it for so many years, then pretty much you've accepted that road as a road, and it should be that way. Thank you.
Commissioner, don't go away. Can I ask you a question, sir? Did you purchase the property you currently live on?
Yes, I did.
Did you have your title cleared at all?
Yes, we did.
And your title came through clear?
Yes, it did. And that's another question that I have, when they did do the title searches, when the house was bought, and that was about 45 years ago, did the town produce these records of 18-something for these people to find that the road was there and not where it is?
No, that's not the way it's done, Mr. Lee Moe. Done? No, I'm not, yeah. It's information, it's not the time to make the argument about that.
What's the matter, sir?
No, it doesn't matter, but you know.
I'm just taking information, and you're giving it to us, and where...
Well, I just think that's kind of a wrong, wrong way to go if you think that people should be paying for this to be changed when, you know, it wasn't them who did this. It was done basically by the town and the developer, and the developer is no longer here, and the, and the town is still here. And being that they have taken the necessary steps to keep the road open and pave it, then I think it's, it should be a town road, it should be an accepted town road.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Larry Thurman from 12 Shore Road. The question really seems to be unfair as far as asking the residents and the owners of the property, as the previous speaker had mentioned, to share the entire burden of undoing something that's been done for over many, many years, through no fault of any one in particular individual. But the question I would have is, if the residents chose not, it doesn't seem reasonable, but hypothetically, if they chose not to abandon the road, what then would the town of Pivoton do? Let it lie as it is? And what expenses would the town of Pivoton then take upon as a town themselves to rectify the situation? It doesn't seem fair that as, when we purchased the property, the title search was done, everything was cleared, the bank cleared it for the loan, everything was fine. And only until recently had questions come up about 12 Shore Road has this Three-Rod Way come into basically knowledge. And it just doesn't seem fair that anyone should, who has purchased a property, who's paid taxes for, as the previous lawyer had mentioned, for one to 50 years at least on the property, paid taxes every year, to now share or actually take on the entire burden of paying for the services and the surveyors, the legal fees, the advertisement, to undo something that there was no property owner who actually was involved with doing this right now. So, it just seems a little disproportionate as far as the involvement of the property owners versus the current situation.
You know, I'll just say one thing, it's up to the owners as to whether they want to go ahead and abandon it. If they don't, that is, that is their decision.
Perhaps I'm mistaken, however, the very first meeting, I believe that we had, that question was sort of brought up, is that once this has been brought to the town's attention, that there is this discrepancy between what on paper exists as a road, which no longer exists, and the current Shore Road, that the town would have to do something now that they realize that this tangled web does exist. So, perhaps I'm mistaken, but my understanding was that now that this was brought to the attention, something has to be done. The most obvious thing to everyone's benefit would be to abandon the Three-Rod Way as it exists on paper, but that if hypothetically, if the residents did not want to abandon it, my impression was that the town would have to do something to correct this situation.
But you may not like the resolve that would come about from that, because the obvious situation is it doesn't have to be abandonment by the town. The town can lay claim to that land, which was there since 1893. The fact that surveys were done and surveyors missed what someone found in 2006, you know, is not the fault of the town, but the fault of the surveyors who plotted out the land and took some shortcuts, obviously, in 1953. That wasn't something the town did. The town does not customarily check when someone comes in to record deeds on subdivisions and so forth. The town doesn't go out and do surveys to make sure that the land that you're claiming to be a subdivision is actually yours to subdivide. So, this was a situation that's no different than any situation that happens today.
Anything else? Hearing nobody or seeing nobody who has their hand up, I will turn to the question of when would be, when the council would be available to meet with Mr. Regiro. We gave some dates.
7:12. Yeah. Yeah, Tom, here, my dear. Meeting date I could attend.
Yeah. 26 is what day?
Thursday.
Thursday? The 26th, Brian tells me is a Thursday.
30th is a Monday.
Yeah, we have, we have a fee, it's a fee meeting, impact fees. Who couldn't make it on the 26th? Donald? Jake? 26th?
I could be here.
You'll be here? Everybody here? All hands?
As long as you don't do it early.
Tuesday to 26th?
Thursday to 26th.
You're talking about July 26th?
Yeah, Thursday to 26th.
Okay.
7:00 P.M.
7:00 I can do.
Pardon me?
7:00 I can do.
Okay, 7:00.
This is just a workshop with Mr. Regiro?
No, it should be a, it should be a special meeting.
Should be a special meeting, yes.
When are we having it?
7:26 at 7:00 P.M.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that the council call a special meeting on that day.
Motion to call a special council meeting on 7:26 at 7:00 P.M. to take up the matter of Shore Road.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on.
That'll be here?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it available?
Not at Shore Road.
Is the room available?
Thursdays, this room here?
Well, we just, you know, we got to check somebody else's schedule.
It is there, we'll cycle, yes.
Okay. Next items are matters that come to us in our capacity as the Board of Licensing Commissioners. The first is a request renewal of manufactured home elderly community license by Countryview We have received a recommendation from the planning board, connection with this matter, which they had no problem. Contention upon their paying, yes.
I'd just like to say, Ms. Derby, Rosemary Eva, Chairman of the Planning Board, we did receive a...
Please speak into the microphone.
Rosemary Eva, Chairman of the Planning Board, we did receive, hand carried on Friday, a letter of credit, so it fulfills...
For the two-year period requested?
For the two-year period expires on June 26, 2009.
Motion to renew the manufactured home elderly community license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
The town clerk, please pass this to the town clerk. All, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Maxine Drug South requests a name change. Actually, I was puzzled by this because we don't have the authority to approve it. All they have to do is file a trade name, file with the town clerk, and then...
It's also a tobacco dealer's license.
Yes, there is a tobacco.
It should be transferred.
So, the transfer, probably transfer of licenses, and based on that motion to transfer all applicable licenses, subject to meeting legal requirements.
All those in favor?
Sunday license should be mentioned too.
There's no more Sunday license, it's a holiday license.
It's a holiday license too?
Next item. Request, Michelle Shelby, DBA Great Eastern Surf Company, request a holiday license for retail surf shop.
That's what it's called.
Hello? Would you state your name, please?
Hi, I'm Michelle Shelby, from Great Eastern Surf Company, and I'm requesting a holiday license for my retail surf shop.
Motion to approve, meeting all legal requirements. Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's good weather for it. Next item is some unfinished business. First request is from the town administrator. Request approval of contract for Pauline Keneche.
You have a contract renewal in front of you for three years for Pauline Keneche. I also highlighted some additional changes in that agreement. The one was to allow her to carry forward from year to year additional time. If she has it in compensatory time, under her agreement, she does not get paid overtime, but can get compensatory time. We already allow that not to, to a much greater degree to the ASME agreement. So, this, this agreement very much mirrors the ASME agreement.
Glenn, when this was brought to us originally, you wanted to bring this forth as a one-year contract, because you're supposedly negotiating with ASME this year, and you wanted to bring everything in line. I just want to know, what happened to that, that whole thought process?
Well, Mrs. Keneche had been approached by some members of the council, and in light of that, I decided, and in hearing some of the concerns that some of the council members had, of offering Mrs. Keneche a simply a one-year agreement, even though we have in the past offered two-year agreements, not three-year agreements, to other employees, I felt it was just best to offer her a three-year agreement. As I told Mrs. Keneche originally, you know, obviously there are budget considerations, Mrs. Keneche was also aware that I had talked to the union about possibly placing her in a union position and hiring people that are more specialists as part-time people, which would have still saved the town anywhere between $12,784 a year to as high as almost $18,000. Because I think we all are aware, as the spending cap decreases, we're going to have to be more creative when it comes to using our employees. But because of the concerns, I went ahead, you know, $18,000 in a $13 million budget is not going to be the end of the world.
I don't know who talked to Mrs. Keneche, I did not, but I asked the question about why it was a one-year contract versus a three-year? Because it's always been a three-year. And generally, when a person's given a one-year contract, that's, that's a sign to them that they should pack their bags and leave within, within the year.
Anna, I don't disagree. I just wanted to know why we had a sudden shift. We were presented with it last time. The logic was, and we have the union contract being worked on this year, and we're going to tie it to that. I wanted to know why we had a sudden shift.
Okay, I don't know. I thought it might have...
If you already also see, it also, in years two and three, ties in to whatever the union agreement is also there, being offered at that particular time. So, if the, whatever the union copays and whatever the union salary increases, so would tie in that union agreement.
That gives me cause to ask a couple more questions. For example, you say the changes are highlighted in black. I note here that she's paid at an hourly rate, and that she is required to work 32 and 1/2 hours. Hasn't that always been a salary per year and 40-hour requirement in that position?
No. It's been 32 and 1/2 since Mr. Costa signed the agreement. In fact, this position actually had less benefits than the general ASME agreement did.
That's right. That's true.
I mean, in terms of the number of time, I mean, it may have been 40 hours under somebody else's tenure, but in the last three and 1/2 years of her agreement, which was a three and 1/2 year agreement, as I recall the dates, she had 32 and 1/2 hours, and it was tied to the, to the hourly rate, so she'd get the minimum hourly rate of whatever. She gets a supervising clerk rate, which is $20.24.
That's okay. If she's agreed to this, then, then...
I have one question, Madam President. Glenn, nowhere in this agreement did I read that there would be any performance evaluations yearly for the duration of the contract. I think that should be something that should be included.
I know, I could also raise a question, why I'm taking an employee who had a three-year contract, and all of a sudden we're doing a one-year contract? Just if we were talking over three years, if we're talking the money over, if we're looking at as far as salary increases, if we're looking to marry it to a ASME contract that was done just the way you did it, you know, it could have been left open, whatever the, whatever the ASME contract would have been, you could have done it just the way it was here. But, you know, for other reasons, I guess you could have explained that towards the first time. The salary part, but I guess, you know, I guess that was the answer here, but, thank you.
She's entitled to bereavement leave, by the way, after her wife dies, but not if her husband does. The word husbands, but that's not been included in the bereavement leave requirements.
Pauline, you missed that, when you were rereading the contract.
Don't go there.
I just want to step in too, for the record, for the sake of the Open Meetings Act, and just note for the record that Mrs. Keneche has been informed of this meeting and, in writing, and did elect to have it in open session. And for the record, is also present in the room right now.
Could that, could that be meant to include husband? Because that's a standard thing, that could have been just a typo. Spouse.
Also, I do think there should be a performance evaluation.
I have no problem adding that, adding that in. I'm sure Mrs. Keneche has no problem with that either.
And in our other contracts, we tie performance evaluations to salary increases, and in this agreement, the salary increases are tied to another contract. So, what's the benefit of the...
Well...
What are we using it for? I mean, we, we've done it in the other contracts because we tie it to something.
Well, because if there's any question about someone's performance, you have no way of measuring whether that person...
Well, this was tied to a, a union contract, that's how this one's tied to.
So, no one, so no one in the union gets an evaluation?
No, that's not true.
Okay.
Union employees are evaluated by their department heads to set standards for the following year. I mean, it's not in an adversarial relationship. It's really sit down, if there's deficiencies, and we also do not encourage the managers to wait an entire year and then list the deficiency. and then list the deficiencies, but talk with the employees. I mean, I don't look at an evaluation as an adversarial.
No, they shouldn't only be discussing inadequacies, but also strengths as well.
Well, and that's, and I'll make sure you get a copy of our evaluation form that we do have in place. So we make sure you get a copy of that. We don't evaluate the same way as we evaluate a manager.
So we need a motion.
So I'd make a motion that we approve Mrs. Keneche's contract as provided by the Administrator, with the additions of a performance evaluation and changing of the bereavement leave to a, the word spouse.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Call for names or?
Yes. All those against? All those abstain? One extension? Sorry? Town Administrator.
You have before you the needs assessment for impact fees, schedule and ordinance. I know that Nancy and I can order for this also to be looked at. I believe also the Planning Board needs to look at it, give them time. We've, we've chosen a September 30th meeting, as you can also see, the-
July 30th.
July, excuse me, July 30th meeting, I've been doing that today. You can also see the information for the updated impact fee ordinance, the information that Mr. Spencer gave, Mr. Sherman.
So before us is to set a date or to just confirm that this will be advertised for July 30th at a special meeting and with notice to the Planning Board to take a review. And be prepared at the public hearing, so.
The July, July 30th was already down as a workshop date for the council. This would be a, a special meeting rather than a workshop. But the problem is the 4th of July messes up the advertising dates.
Yes.
So, yeah, so it would be referred to the Planning Board for an advisory recommendation. And then if you would set July 30th as the public hearing. And, and as you'll see from the next item, the idea was to keep, keep all the fees together as well. If you have any specific questions about the changes, I'm, I'm happy to address them or obviously we can wait till, until July 30th comes.
The council had a workshop where Mr. Shumun went through the needs assessment as well as the ordinance, and there were some suggestions from the council members. I believe they have been incorporated. So I will entertain a motion that a, a, the July 30th be set as a special meeting of the council. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Next item. Again, this will be the sewer use fees, the wastewater management, and the betterment fees will also be considered at the same time.
And also the town fees for building fire. And the police administrative fees would be done that way. That way, we can give pop proper public notice, which was agreed as part of this, moving the fees from the, written into the ordinances, that we would have a public hearing before they were disposed of. And just for your information, I've spent a couple hours. We can't seem to find a resolution or anything, how they set the police administrative fees.
Did you ever find out whatever, did anybody ever give you the history on that, Glenn?
I, I know the history, yes. I do know the history, how it came about, how it used to be. So I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
That's what actually sparked my original interest on how they were calculating fees.
I think then we'll have a motion to also discuss at the special meeting on July 3rd, the list of fees, wastewater, sewer, betterment, town fees, for the Planning Board. It'll be a fee night.
July 30th?
So moved.
Another second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving now to our favorite subject, which is approval of the transfer of funds.
I think you all have the explanations that are attached with the spreadsheet that I'd like to thank Nancy for putting together for me. This is a transfer to cover-
There is a motion.
An overtime shortage. And that's related to IOD, FMLA, and training of new firefighters from last year. Or the beginning, I should say, of the last, of this fiscal year. But in July and August. Transfer to cover shortfall in the FICA account. Apparently, when the budget was originally being put together, we did not include the librarians in the, in the FICA accounts calculation. We are a little short in the municipal pension fund, and that's a cap, a calculation mistake on my part. We also, as you are well aware, and I've told you previously, we've been carrying an accrual on two firefighters that was in the unfunded liability account, which is now a separate account. This allows us to clear up that accrual. And the same can be said with the rubbish recycling account. We were carrying an accrual. And this should correct all of that. There should be no more accruals in those accounts.
Almost 36,000 bucks, and that's a tremendous accrual.
Well, let me explain, if you are, what essentially was happening on some of these accounts is that the bill of June was paid in, in July. And, and the auditors did mention that there had been accrual problem in their management letters. And I've tried to go through and identify as much of them as I could find in the budget. You know, it's the same issue of how we accrue salaries. Whether we carry, now there is every seven to 10 year, a 27th paid a week in the town of Tiverton, which we have to have the funds for. And you need to accrue that over, over a number of years. And that's not been done at every park, and we're trying to correct that also.
We're not talking about a paid week here for the rubbish removal, we're talking about an entire month.
You're, you're correct.
So how did we lose an entire month over the course of, what, is it a three-year contract we had with voice management?
I would imagine that's when it started. I, I know, folks, I'm dealing with the accruals and trying to correct it in the budget. Getting these issues, you know, corrected, and what I have found over the past few months, working with the auditors, and trying to clean up these old accruals. That is what is happening.
But didn't we add services in the trash contract that increased the?
Yeah, the trash, that was the other problem. You also added $59,000.
Was it added in? Does that make a difference?
The problem was, you approved, we went to a financial town meeting at $509,000 to $507,000. The contract we got back was approved in June, and that was almost $562,000, I believe. So there's $53,000 shortage right off the bat.
It was called a spade.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, no.
It's not called an accrual.
No, right. There was, there was an expect, expectation, the contract went before the financial town meeting, when the renewal numbers come in, because sometimes we don't get our renewal numbers, we make an anticipation, and with changes to that, we incurred 60-some thousand dollars. I think now transferring 35, we transferred 35, is really making up for this shortfall that existed. The accrual that I think we're being referred to is that we're finding ourselves getting in arrears on these accounts and accruing a balance. And that's what he's saying when he's talking about accrual. We're accruing a balance in these things above and beyond what, what is there. And this is to, to correct that deficiency. But, you know, I, I know what the rubbish one is, and, you know, we'll question some of the other ones.
I think it would be simpler, I mean, I don't think accrual is the right word. I think it's a shortfall. A shortfall on the transfers will be used to cover shortfalls in this current year's budget. Is that?
If you're comfortable with a shortfall, that's fine.
I'm much more comfortable with a shortfall than I am with some bizarre accrual that, you know, we're, we're trying to pass something off like that.
We're not trying, I, we're not trying to pass anything all past.
We owe the money.
I don't doubt that we owe the money. I just want to clearly, I want to know why.
No, no, Jay, Jay, I, I clearly understand where you're coming from. I know I was sitting here when some of this came about, so I can explain to you probably a little bit better where we are. We've added some, something that cost us more money, and we're not paying the bill for it. And we got to do it by taking it from other accounts, because there is no money in that account.
And there's people who have a bill to us and they're waiting for their money, so I'm not going to hold them up. But I want to be clear on why we're paying this.
Yes.
Is the amount, $35,179 sufficient to pay off the last payment?
Yes, sir.
I calculated a figure that came out about 38. I would hate to see a short $3,000. But if you say that's it, that's it.
I don't know what budget sheet you may have, sir.
I, I used the May budget report and your numbers, and I just bounced one off the other. And it seemed to me that you would need $38,000 to pay off rubbish and recycling.
There's been another report since that.
Well, you may, and you may have gotten those $3,000 from someplace else and transferred it already. Just mentioning that.
Glenn, I just have a question. In these utility accounts, like street lighting, electric and gas, you wouldn't be creating a shortfall there?
If my projections are right, there should not be a shortfall in those accounts based on what we're seeing, the electric bills at the same time last year.
Because I, historically, I've always known that the street account is always-
There is, and if there's, what we're going to, there is, will be about, you know, it all depends on, I guess this is, it gets into accounting and it gets down into terms accountants use. So, but let's, we'll put it in more plain English. We buy services in the month of June.
Yeah, we also-
We may not get the bill until July 15th. We have to estimate out what that bill is going to be.
Glenn, that's an encumbrance.
Well, that's an encumbrance, that's right.
Is encumbered by that debt.
That is, that is correct. But when you accrue over a period of years, this debt, it just becomes an accrual that you need to address because it's a shortfall essentially. Now, we have talked with the, with the auditors. You know, we have a mad rush every year of trying to close out your books by June 30th. And it used to be because you had software that actually had to be closed by June 30th for the, for the new software to work. We don't need to do that anymore. And probably the best way of doing this from next year is to come and address this in mid to late July. By that time, all these old invoices could be gotten in because we really don't technically close our books until the end of July to mid, to mid-August.
Joan, let me try to answer your question. Based on the quick numbering that I did, there will be balances in those accounts in spite of the fact that we're transferring out.
And then can you explain to me what the tax sale account would be?
The tax sale account is a, an account that every year helps pay for us to go to tax sales, essentially for the advertising. And that is what's money is left in that account at the end of this fiscal year. And there'll be more money to go in for tax sale next year because we will hold, typically hold our tax sales in October.
That is, excuse me, Glenn, that is a revolving account, tax sale. If anything was redeemed, any property was redeemed, the taxes are collected and put into that tax sale account. So it's like a revolving account. That's why we usually exclude it, it has its own line number in the budget.
But it also-
Because you could be over the 5,000. If somebody comes in and redeems property, it goes in that account as well.
But you also budget for it too. And there is-
We budget because we have to pay, that's why it's a separate line item. We have to pay for advertising, title work, everything.
But as it comes-
Which we recover.
And then it comes back in, we recoup the money and it comes back in. Then whatever property is purchased by the town or by anyone else, when the taxpayer comes in to redeem that property, whatever they pay goes back into that account, it's like a revolving.
I'm sorry?
Someone who's been in excess of that, the county town, what's going on? Has the material count?
As of tonight, have you approved these transfers? Does this basically square us for the fiscal year, or are we still looking to mid-July?
I'm not looking at coming back, I mean, I think we've got everything tweaked for this year. I'm not anticipating coming back. Because my approach was endless, as we- My approach was to handle this as we have always handled this. But next year, what I would recommend is that we deal with this in July, when we have all of our bills and, and if there needs to be hopefully any shifting. You know, we know we have enough money in our trash account. We know that the $16,500 shortfall, which has been for the last three years, that issue's gone. I, I really don't know what other major issue may be out there at this particular point in time.
But this will square us for this current fiscal year?
I, I don't have a problem with the transfers for the rubbish recycling. And maybe we should take these things separately because I do have some problems with some of the other ones.
Okay, let's, does somebody make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transfers to cover the $35,879.96 sense to be transferred to the rubbish recycling account.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, let's go to fire pension.
Is this the one in regards to the retirement enhancement for two firefighters?
Yes.
For $11,537.26?
So that unfunded liability is actually to cover pension for firemen? The two, the two firemen will have an agreement, but it's still part of the pension system?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second. Now, I assume that we are presently up to date in connection with that, those two firemen?
Once this, once this transfer is made, we go ahead and pay them anytime. But we need to pay them before June 30th.
Okay, and this $11,000 covers the period from what to what?
It covers the payment that, for this year, for 2006 to 2007.
Okay.
From then on-
So it's a shortfall?
It's a shortfall.
Right. Accrual is when you pass a fiscal year. We're not accruing. Let's get, let's get the lingo right. This is a shortfall in this year's budget.
It is a shortfall.
But let's leave it at that. Is a motion made?
This was, this is now a line item in the budget?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And I took that out of the unfunded liability because-
And, and right, and made it a line item?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't run into this every year and trying to figure out where we're getting it from?
It is for this year, okay. There is a motion? And seconded, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that transfer is made. Next item, fire pension. $3,400.
This moves from the fire pension to the municipal pension. This was a calculation mistake that I made last year in the pension for the municipal workers.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a FICA transfer.
This covers a shortfall in the FICA account?
Because we didn't include librarians.
Right. And if you now look on the, on their budget, the library has- And if you now look on the, on their budget, the library has a FICA account in their, in the budget. I mean, next year, for instance, to fully assess the cost of running the library, we're also going to be taking some of their insurance costs, you know, and just moving it over there and reflecting it because we are still paying some of their benefit costs in another line item. Workman's comp and liability.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we get to the good stuff.
Now, the last item is police education to fire department overtime.
Correct.
By the way, the police education account number should be 333-528 instead of 333-358.
What is 358?
Say what?
Is there a 358?
It should be 333-528. That's police education.
Why is 358?
It says 358.
What is 358?
I just...
And this is the one I have a problem with.
This is, that's for this fiscal year, correct, Glenn?
Yes, sir.
What is, um...
My, my, 528, uh, three, yeah, 358. My issue with here is, in our next request, we have some carryforwards. And in the fire department, we're carrying forward fuel oil and tires of $28,9165 and apparatus maintenance $3,024.09. And before we take money out of someone else's account, meaning the police department, to transfer it to the fire department, there should be no money in the fire department accounts. Because, you know, we've been given the right to transfer it between departments, but we should be clear that you can't be having a carryforward in one account and paying a shortfall in another account within the same department before we take money from someone else's department to cover those expenses. I think what, opportunity that was given to us or the privilege that was given to us to be able to transfer it between departments should be used only when there is no funds in a particular department to cover any trans, any, any bills. If there's money in those, in that department to cover the bills, that's where it should come from first.
There is no account 358, uh...
Okay.
No 358.
So, um...
You'd have to reduce that amount of the $18,438.30. You'd have to reduce that amount by $5,915.74.
Which we leave it at what?
All right. But you need to also transfer those other two numbers because they're beyond my transfer limitation.
Okay, are you removing that $5,000 from this bottom line? Are we not talking about the police education to fire department?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to transfer $2,891.65 from fuel oil and tires 331-611 in the fire department, $3,024.09 in 331-740 apparatus maintenance in the fire department, and the remaining balance of the $18,438.30 from police education to cover the $18,438.30 transfer to the fire department overtime.
Second.
Why is there so much money left in the police education account?
Either it's been over budgeted for a few years or it has, they, we just didn't have as many officers take advantage of, of going out and seeking education training.
The reason the number is as high as it is, I think, is we have a requirement if they take educational classes at the college level to pay for that. And in the past, they have taken advantage of the opportunity and we've paid some hefty college bills. And we may not have any officers currently participating in that. So it's, it's one of those that it's there for the safety net so we don't end up with the shortfall at the end of the year of a serious amount.
And we've also, in the last hirings, tried to hire someone who already has their college degree or is very close to completing their college degree. But I also, I believe it also can apply if someone wants to pursue graduate school too. It does not go for law school like it used to. But the training...
Has been made. Did you get the numbers, guys?
Yes.
Okay. There is a second to that motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
May I ask the question if this is a necessary action before June 30th? Most people believe we must do it before June 30th, Madam President. If that's a fact...
Well, I don't think it is, but let's hear from the administrator.
Well, it's, it's not a fact, it's, it's a practice. And Jim and I have been talking with the auditor about this, but it's always been how you've been doing it. And I had just, as I mentioned earlier, obviously it would be better doing this probably in, in July because I know some of these numbers have already, are below what we've put into them already because we've had payments out this week.
James Amoranti's Town Treasurer. If the council needs a, a, a budget report through June 30th in order to make some informed decisions as far as carryover, that's a reasonable request. And I would certainly support continuing this to July 9th.
I haven't...
I'm not sure what, where you're going with this.
It doesn't have to be done, as Hannibal was saying, right?
Well, we don't close, Glenn said it a few minutes ago, Councilman Cal Paul. We don't close the books June 30th. There's not a guillotine that comes down. We, we've still got a lot of work closing out the fiscal year. And the auditors will probably not start, and we've had meetings already, until mid, late August. Although we don't like to stretch this thing out, there should be some finality. And some of the encumbrances are not going to come in till the end of July, so we're not going to have that important financial information for fiscal '07 until then. So certainly, I'll, I'll try my darndest to have that, that budget report for, as of June 30th, to you in time for the next council meeting so you can look at this in an unhurried fashion and decide where you want to go with the carryover requests.
I think we can do, I think we can handle this in a two-pronged approach here because this clearly indicates also in this that the release of funds will require authorization by the council. So maybe for this year, until we get this thing squared away and not get ourselves into anything that treads on some area where we're, there's an uncomfortability about crossing over that supposed June 30th deadline, is to do the carryforwards, get the final report on amounts, and then take a look at these issues, you know, as they stand here and see how much of this we want to take. And law is a carryforward for legitimate reasons or how much of it we should have returned to the general fund. And, you know, if the, if the next budget is, is properly prepared, we should be, you know...
I would be doing it twice. My, my own feeling is that we should wait for the budget report June 30th. Some of these things may fall by the wayside. And some, for example, GIS mapping, I think the auditors, as I read their footnotes, say that on a, on a, a capital item of that type where, where we don't have to vote to carry over, that, that will be added to and, and be in place as a restricted account until the funds are used.
But because it was appropriated over a three-year period, and therefore would not generally refer back to the general fund because the total amount would not be available until three years because we had planned that.
Exactly. But they would take the position, I believe, and you can check me as I read that, is that we don't actually have to vote to carry those over because they're carried over until they're used.
It just goes back, you know, to...
But let's decide this one way or another.
Madam President, I would prefer that maybe, since you're talking about fees, do this on July 30th. And by that time, all of our, we should have, just about every invoice should have been come in and we will be able to make sure all, where we stand for anything that has, any service that we have purchased should be in and cleared our decks, you know, at least a few days before your meeting on the 30th.
Well, that would have meant, that would have been okay for the, for the transfers, but not the carryforward.
Yeah, what about the, yeah, the 23rd?
Yeah.
I don't know where the...
But we do need a motion one way to the other. So...
I'd make a motion to recontinue this to our meeting on the July 23rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. That, pass it in.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jim.
Opposed.
Opposed. The town's lyric is opposed, and please note in the...
Absolutely. Yes, treasurer.
You're going to, Laura Apke Nekro, if you're going to continue this. I did have question, two questions that might be researched before you take this up again. The GIS mapping, we were supposed to have three payments this year when we appropriated the $9,000 payment. It was the fourth payment that we've appropriated.
Actually, it was not, Laura. There was a typographical error. Apparently, it was originally planned to start four years ago. It made it, I guess, got eliminated on the floor of the financial town meeting and then the number just kind of got picked up the second year when it was on there again as the second payment in. It was only actually the first because that same question was, was asked as part of the budget process because I kept, I did not include it as a line item in the capital budget this year, but Mrs. Eva brought it to my, Mrs. Eva brought it to my attention and did the research and discovered the history.
So then...
You told me that they hadn't picked it up in the press at all.
No, you...
I, I...
The first year it was on the financial town docket, it was defeated.
It was defeated.
That was 2004? I don't have...
I'm going to have to go back and look at dockets, but the first time that, the first time the request for GIS mapping came up, it was turned down because I think it was a request for the entire, for the entire figure.
That's right.
And it was turned down. And the following year, the approach was taken to do it over a three-year period.
Well, I've got, I mean, I could research it now, but I would appreciate looking into it because if that is the case, then presumably we allotted a certain amount of money to pay over three years. And if we appropriated an extra $9,000, then that theoretically should go back to the general fund.
That's right.
The other question I have is, the other number occurring for Bogomash rehab?
Yes.
And I can't seem to find that in any docket.
That was in the docket from, not this current docket of 2007. It was from the May 16th or May, whatever the date was, May 15th docket of 2006, and there was $5,000 there.
Okay, so, you know, I can catch up with, I don't find it in that budget, but that doesn't mean to say my eyes aren't failing me.
You're too young to have failing eyesight.
They usually don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I truly agree with what Councilor Bowman was saying. I just, I'm trying to just clarify. My original carryforward was also with the caveat on the end of it, all the balance left at the end of June 30th in those two fuel oil accounts and apparatus maintenance accounts. I know what I need to get to the end of the month with the overtime. I'm just clarifying as to what that amount would be. I actually need $21,000 to get to, I've transferred out of other accounts. I still know I have apparatus and fuel bills that are coming in, so I'm just, I'm just curious.
I was going to make a motion, well, I'll hold it now until we get to the meeting in July, to sweep the accounts in all of the operating departments. Fire, police, DPW, the large departments, if there's any others that you feel should be in that category. Sweep all the accounts and carry those funds over in the materials account. And we can then figure those things out at our leisure. If we had to make a motion tonight, that would be the motion that I would make. But if we're going to wait until July, then maybe we can see the, the June budget report.
I'm just concerned, I just want to make sure I'm able to meet payroll. That's my concern.
Okay.
My, my, my thing was, we're, we're asked for a carryforward and there were dollar figures in the carryforward. It did not tell us here, you know, this is one of the problems with asking for a carryforward on June some, you know, 15th or 26th. And we got to go four more days and there are bills that are going to come out of these two accounts because we just wiped them out for you technically by, by our vote.
Absolutely.
But, you know, but it was that same reason. And my thinking was the same. I, I just think that we were given a privilege to do transfers that we haven't had in the past between departments. And I want to make sure nobody thinks that we take that frivolously and are going to just make transfers because of a request. And when I saw you were carrying forward funds, I think that those funds should have been expended first and that was the reason for my motion. And we may end up with, with an unpaid bill at the end of the year and maybe have to take it out of some other carryforward account because there's still going to be some monies left. But I just can't find myself approving, you know, transfers from someone else's funds until your funds are gone.
Absolutely agree with you, Mr. Bowman. I just, I just, my original encumbrance, when I was part of the carryforward, was brought forward, there was a line on the end that said, "All the balance left on June 30th." So I'm just curious.
I, I understand that, but that's where we get back to this situation we've talked about earlier tonight about encumbrances. And if you've had, you know, $3,000 a month in a fuel bill, then $3,000 you should have been just saying, you know, is, is being incumbent. And that's the way we've handled this in the past. We've handled this two separate issues. You would encumber whatever funds you thought were necessary for that period of time. Well, we're not seeing encumbrances now or ask for encumbrances to cover, you know, what the expectation is of a bill. We're asking for it as a carryforward and then have to spend it out of the carryforward.
I, I, I think what, we ask the chief in anything and all department heads, if they wanted to carry money over, they were to give us an estimate to their best ability, what they believe they would have left in the line item as of June 30th. Taking into consideration, we still have, when this reports were filed, which was last Thursday, there was still almost eight days left in, in the fiscal year. And anything can go wrong. Anything that someone didn't anticipate or forgot about can come up. And that's why we use the term balance. And, you know, with the chief, unfortunately, whenever, whenever the chief has something go wrong, it's usually a sizable number when it comes to a repair. And these are just estimates.
But I, but I also understand that if something broke today and we sent it out and the bill came in July 2nd, then it's, it's next year's bill, even though it broke this year. So, I mean, when we're looking at this issue of the, the dollars we're talking about here in this transfer, I see anything that would happen that would create a problem here, we probably wouldn't be billed to us until the next fiscal year. So I don't see that as being a major issue for that $5,000.
I understand.
You said something that I want to come back to.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that the fire department overtime for the, for the year ending June 30th is $21,000.
Twenty-one, I have $21,000 at the point, and I, I apologize for not bringing my work with me this evening for that. It was $21,000 we had transferred from other accounts into that, that overtime account to try to compensate for that, to take as much out as we could. And then also the two accounts that we had anticipating that there may be a very small balance left, if any, at the end. And that's why we came up with a figure of $18,000 plus those other transfers that we had put over. So I'm just, I'm trying to be cautious and trying to look for the clarification that come the end of the year, I can meet payroll. I mean, that's my projected, what I know overtime is going to be used for that up to July 1st. So I'm just, I mean, I know you've made the vote. I'm just trying to get that clarification so that... I'm just trying to get that clarification so that, because right now I think there's about $40 left in that overtime account.
Do we also have any overtime from the other town?
Yes, we did.
So... See, that was not factored in.
It's into the next pay, it's into next pay period. They're not going to get paid until July. That's when, that's when the pay period is.
Payroll goes in tomorrow morning for the past week, and there is not enough money
in the overtime account right now to meet that payroll when I put it in tomorrow morning. I'm just concerned, I understand, I'm just trying to voice that just so that I can look for that clarification as well.
Excuse me. Payroll, the treasurer has gone.
Yes.
But my payroll's going in tomorrow, too, and I'm using July funds for it. I don't have June funds. We budget 26 weeks, and your next fund, you'll have a whole year to come up with the difference.
My overtime for the, for a week is approximately $9,000 worth of overtime plus payroll plus the employees that I have paid in the rears. We have employee, half of my department's paid in the rears.
He has more of his employees that are paid currently.
I would just like to raise that question, Madam President. That's all. Thank you.
Well, that's nice, so...
I would suggest you have a fire, Chief. Have a little fire and burn those bills. Do we have a motion on the floor of carrying?
You know, it doesn't really change. I mean, we appropriated $18,000. All Mr. Bowman's motion was, is take some of your balance in your accounts and the remainder from the police department education. It's still $18,000, but you're saying $18,000 is not enough.
I hope he's not...
He wanted the other $5,900.
No, it should be, Madam President, with the additional monies that I've taken out of other accounts. Again, it was just trying to get it in under the wire to have it in timeframe for this meeting. I just want to make everyone know that's it.
I see. Clarification, okay.
Keeping my fingers crossed. Let's hope we acquire a week.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Can we approve the motion to transfer this?
Now, the, did we, yes. With our last, did we approve the carryovers to discuss those on July 23rd?
Continued to July 23rd. It was unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, Mr. Cowan.
Okay. Then, Town Administrator.
Hey, me.
Oh, town clerk. Hey, me. Oh, yes, with the town council contingency there.
This is absolutely short, Paul, and that isn't going to even cover it all. That's not even going to cover it all.
You're getting to how you do next year's account. You just drag it off. How you do it all the time?
No, sir. I said payroll does.
Planning, planning has $5,000 in advertising.
Unfortunately, when I say to the council, "Why don't we hold off on this because we don't have the money to advertise?" I get the vote that says, "No, go advertise," and now we're stuck with the bills.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve $3,500.
What's, what's the amount in the council contingency fund?
It's $15,000, maybe?
You're going to carry some of that over.
We can't have any less.
A motion has been made to...
What's enlisted on the carry?
$890, is it?
Take $3,500 from the council contingency fund. Has been seconded. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Town Administrator.
Join me.
I request, excuse me, I requested to Nancy, put it on your desk, something that should have been included prior to this originally. These are carry forward funds that were left over from the 2005, 2000 fiscal year and carried into this year. One was grant matching funds of $3,306.10, which I'm asking to be carried forward to use as hopefully part of the match for some of the Bogomash Park activities to match the $18,000 pending your approval. The other is stormwater management. There was some money left over in that for the implementation of stormwater management, too, for $2,480, and I'm asking that these be carried forward into this next fiscal year also.
For a total of $3306.10?
I will defer to your math there, sir.
Well, I didn't, I didn't calculate this one. I'm just reading it off the agenda request. It's a carry, carry, it's a carry forward of $3,306.10.
$10, plus the $2,480 for stormwater 2 management.
That's, we don't have that one in writing, boy.
No, but I asked, would ask if you include that in. I put, I mean, if it was kind enough to put it on your, on your, attributed to you.
We, the DPW has a stormwater management request for $6,550 for carry forward in this year's budget.
Correct.
Stormwater management is not an area I want to see us transferring money out of or taking carry forward and giving it to someone else. I think stormwater management is going to be something that's going to cost us a ton of money down the line, and if we've appropriated some money, I think that's one that clearly should be carried forward because those costs that are incurred on this town for stormwater management are increasing year to year, and I don't think of being covered by what we're putting into the budget. So therefore, I really think that those money should stay in that account. That's one of those accounts that really needs to be preserved.
Well, that's where it stays. It basically is stating, I want to carry forward from $99,553,813, which is stormwater management. That was money left over from the 2005, 2006 fiscal year, and to carry forward into the same account, just like Mr. Webster didn't realize he had this money, he had thought it had already been transferred in. I thought it had been transferred in. We went back and reviewed the carry forwards, found out there was that money because ultimately, Mr. Webster, I can promise you, or whoever his successor is, is going to be spending that money. We know that.
My point is, on the stormwater management carry forward, why don't we just make the one motion to carry forward the $2,480 and the $6,550 and that? I mean, take it out of, you know, our consideration for the 23rd because that's when I don't think we can argue. I know we're going to be spending tons of money. We're mapping the outflows now, and these funds are clearly going to get, going to expend, going to get expended in stormwater management.
Mr. Webster, you guys can kind of clarify all this for us?
Yes, actually, Mr. Bowman is quite correct about the mapping, that we, we have actually done the mapping work. We've done the testing work. I'm trying to get the invoice prior to July 1. In the event that I cannot get the invoice, that's why we're asking for the carry forward.
So the $2,480 is staying for the same purpose, just possibly in the next year?
Actually, I think that the invoice will come in such that perhaps the $2,480 and the $6,500 may not be enough, quite enough to cover the entire bill. It will be close.
Why don't we do this as an encumbrance and encumber this money for a bill that's due, and I think that's an easier way to handle this. You say we're going to, we're going to get an invoice for pretty close to this or maybe a little bit above this, and I make a motion, we encumber the funds in this account, the $2,480 and the $6,550, to cover an outstanding invoice due to arrive shortly.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Anybody opposed?
I'll abstain, Madam Chair.
Okay. One abstention.
I have no idea what would...
Stormwater management, all of you.
Okay, moving on. Chief Flaky requests permission to advertise to fill positions of part-time dispatchers.
No action on this though.
All of them.
No action on F-3?
No, on, that was the Bogomash. Yeah, we approved that.
No, there was no, nobody, nobody made an action. We got into that other one because we're reading two on that.
Okay. Uh, Chief?
Yes. Madam President, please define the experience of excessive amount of overtime in the communication area. We're trying to alleviate that by hiring some part-time personnel. The per diem, the union contract does allow that. The per diem situation just didn't seem to be working out. People would like to have some more established hours, and as myself and Mr. Steckman discussed, we're trying to, again, just trying to alleviate some of the overtime that's occurring constantly.
We also have at least one, maybe two dispatchers going to be on FMLA. One is on it right now, and this would give us some flexibility if they come back in a part-time position, which they're allowed to under FMLA, to partially fill this. These could be temporary, these could be full-time. We're not sure at this point, but it's not going to change the workforce.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Chief, I'd like to ask you, what positions you looking to uncover here?
I'd like to try to get four.
Four.
My question is, the statement said we'd be compensated, reduce rate, and do not receive full-time employee benefits. What benefits do they receive?
As a part-time employee, they are eligible to accrue sick time and vacation time.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions?
Yeah. These part-time, we hire somebody part-time, what is our liability on unemployment if we terminate?
If it's under 19 and a half hours.
A week, we don't, okay.
Unemployment?
Okay. Well, no, when someone leaves our employment, you know, we get tagged for the unemployment, you know, and that's why I'm making sure that the hours and so forth isn't going to put us into a situation that we hire someone part-time, you know, or temporary, and we end up with a bill at the end of the period that we didn't expect, and I just want to make sure that's not going to happen.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion opposed.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President. Town clerk has asked if we've taken any action on item F-3. Did we not pass, make a motion and pass it?
That is the monies for carry forwards and the grants. I would request that we discuss this on July 23rd as part of your financial closeout for the year.
The advertising shortfall?
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the issue...
And I'm talking about F-3.
Bogomash Park.
Yeah, I'm talking about F-3. I thought we had settled Bogomash Park.
Yep. Okay, that will be...
F-3 was the use of the $3,500 shortfall on advertising. Yeah. Did we take any action on that? Yeah, that, that was passed. That was passed. You abstained. Okay. No, I didn't.
No, 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 he passed the...
It was unanimous? Well, on four, we did not do anything with the carry forward of the...
That's my question. And what I'm requesting is that this either be, since we're going to be discussing all of these financial issues on the 23rd, address it at that particular time if it's the desire of the council.
That's F-4.
That is F-4, yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, F-3 was approved.
Is that, is that...
Why don't we just agree that that will all be discussed as we discuss carry forwards? Okay. Next item, G-2. Town Administrator.
We have had a employee go out on extended leave, and Mr. Webster has come and has requested to handle, to hire temporary help since this is his peak period for, the employee is going to be out for six to eight weeks. One of the questions that came up in this discussion is part of the Personnel Board. The Personnel Board advertises for all temporary or seasonal help, as you're well aware. The issue that Mr. Webster brought up was, should, could he go out to attempt manpower to bring in a laborer, DPW worker, that we'd have the qualifications that they could bring on for six to eight weeks? I consulted with Andy about this, and I'm going to let Andy speak if he wishes to. The recommendation that Andy made is that the Personnel Board go out, select and solicit prices from manpower agencies. This is not an employee going to be on our payroll. We have discussed this with the union. We have discussed this with the Teamsters in general. It's whatever you wish to go forward with. But this is one of the busy times, and Mr. Webster is trying to get a lot of work done around the town.
Okay. Mr. Webster, you, you want to add anything to the Administrator's statement?
I just wanted to confirm, and just so you know, the employee that's going to be out is not going to be paid any salary at this time. I just wanted to confirm that before I said it publicly.
The only thing that I would add is that if you, if this person that comes in is hired by an employment agency, we will be under contract with the agency, not the individual. Therefore, the town is not responsible for any of the insurance workers comp that typically comes with an employee. It's strictly a flat payment to the temporary, the employment agencies. There is something in the contract, in the union contract, that allows for hiring of temporary summer help. There is a clause that allows that.
How many positions are you seeking?
Just one, to replace the one person who is going to be on extended leave.
I have, I have no problem with going about it in this manner as long as the cost for the employee does not, to the employment agency does not exceed the total cost of salary and benefits for an employee, meaning if we take the total compensation, because we know that obviously an employment agency, you know, makes some money, and I don't want us getting into a situation that the state has found them in, and I just think that if we can hold it within the cost for the employee, which is, you know, the medical, and in the Teamsters' case, there's the health and welfare, you know, which pay and so forth, and when we add all those costs, if the agency feels less than the cost that we're paying an employee, I will support this move to hire in that manner because it will fall within the budget that we have for personnel.
And if it exceeds...
And I think he has to, I think he has to come back before us because it puts us in a situation that the amount of money that's been allocated for salaries are not going to be sufficient because this, I take it, is coming out of the salary account.
Just so you know, the...
Is that, is that a reasonable approach because...
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with that. In fact, to make it easier, I think if, if, I don't believe that the rate that we would be paying the agency would exceed the salary and benefits. However, if it does, we could reduce the number of hours to stay under the total amount, if that's acceptable.
Did you say something about going out for bids in this regard or making inquiry?
I believe Mr. Steckman did.
I did. What was the direction that the suggestion was, is for them to solicit, you know, two or three, and there's more than a handful of these manpower agencies.
Yeah, yeah.
And get some pricing before we engage.
But I, I don't think the Personnel Board should be the one handling this. I really believe that if we were hiring an employee, then we would have to use the Personnel Board. We are not hiring, we are not hiring an employee. We are contracting a service with an employment agency. In, in this particular case, I don't think this, I think it's an extra step that doesn't serve us and isn't totally necessary. That's why I'm wondering what the process is here. If you're hiring an employee, your process, what, you're hiring an agency, you're subcontracting out. You're not hiring an individual.
I think, I think the issue is when we use the word temporary employee.
You're subcontracting.
We understand that, but we're looking at the charter and I don't...
If you're, if you're saying an employee, if you're looking at an individual, it's the hiring of all personnel, including full-time, part-time, acting, temporary, seasonal employees shall be done to the personnel.
These are not our employees.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand where your guys come from.
But I, I'm just, I'm just concerned on the process.
Right. I think the process has got to be a little bit flexible. If you get two or three bids and find the appropriate person, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. This is one employee, a temporary, he's been during the summer.
For six weeks, which means we should allow the Administrator to handle the, the Administrator and, and the DPW to handle the... So our beach work is in the summer.
It's six to eight weeks.
They go before the Personnel Board. They're interviewed, that's right. They're interviewed for, by the Personnel Board, and those are people that are hired just for a beach season also, so I, you know, so... We pay them to the individual itself, and these are not contract, these are, this is a contract with an employment agency. So you're hiring, so you're hiring an employment agency, you're not hiring an individual. The council's entering into a contract. With an, with an, with an agency, not an individual.
With an, with an agency, not an individual. That's, that's what we're making sure.
Yep.
May I?
Yes.
I respectfully disagree with the sentiments of the council. I think that the charter can only be read in one way, the way it says hiring of all personnel, including full-time, part-time, acting, temporary, or seasonal employees, shall be done through the Personnel Board. I don't think you can say we're hiring an agency and subcontracting it out. That's the same thing that DOT has gotten into.
That's what I'm trying to look at.
And, and I don't think we can do that. I think that this does come under the Personnel Board. Now, that being said, I don't think the Personnel Board has to advertise and interview everybody. The Personnel Board can call the three manpower agencies and get the bid and arrange and working with Mr. Webster to get a temporary employee, but I think it has to be done with the Personnel Board under the charter, because our charter is rather explicit.
Correct.
Oh, boo.
I'm sorry.
That's what I got to hear, boo.
Well, Mr. Webster, we tried to help you out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hopefully, the Personnel Board will say, fine, you know, David, go, go, go get the three bids and just report back to them, and, you know, and they'll, they'll give you the green light to go, but I think it does have to be done with the Personnel Board.
And, and just so you know, the Personnel Board has been consulted with this method. They are agreeable to this method, obviously, with the constraints that I think Councilor Bowlin, from looking at everybody's heads nodding, this is what we'd like to do, stay within the salary for the week, even if it means, if it's agreeable, less than, less than forty.
Well, I'm not, no, I see, I'm not, I don't say I agree with that. I want to see what we got out there, that we're going to get. I think you have ample monies when we talk about salary and benefits of an employee, because, you know, the contributions that we're making and so forth and so on, whether it be FICA, you know, unemployment, whatever those compensation, whatever that compensation might be, it isn't just the hourly rate of the individual. So there's enough flexibility in that, that should be able to get us an employee. If it doesn't, I think we have to revisit this, because to get it at less, somebody's getting more money than these guys, you know, working less, we're just fudging with the salary account, we're getting less done for the same money, and that's, that's my issue, and I don't want to see that happen.
Well.
The line's here. By the time you go with the Personnel Board, I mean, we're going to be into the snow season, so.
We will, if, if you're so agreeable, we will try to accomplish it that way.
Okay, let us just leave it at that, that you will.
I'll make a motion to accomplish it in that manner we've discussed.
Well, it gives it flexibility.
Does the clerk have that motion, or does it need to be restated?
I'll have it restated.
The motion, the motion is basic.
The motion is to authorize the DPW director, going through the Personnel Board, to hire temporary help, provided that the.
It falls within the salary and benefit structure of the current employees.
Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining?
All abstained.
Six, one abstention. All right, now, Town Clerk.
My situation's a little bit different. I spoke with the Personnel Board, and they are currently interviewing for the part-time position in the building official's office, so they don't have a problem. They will present a list of people, and we could draw from that. Now, it would only be temporary, assuming the person that's been out for a year comes back. But I can't keep going this way. We're just treading backwards.
So you're asking us to authorize you to retain?
I'm temporary.
Temporary help.
To hire.
Is this going to be similar to the other position, being paid out of the salary account?
Absolutely. Currently, I'm paying time and a half, and I'm paying outside services.
Is there a motion?
The only, the only issue we have with this with temporary help is the same one. If we hire someone temporarily and have them work to 32 hours, when we have a layoff, we have to cover whatever salary, depending on the length, time someone's been here, we're going to be covering the unemployment. And I understand, we don't, you know, we just cover that. We don't pay into the fund. When they collect unemployment, we just continue to pay them. So the issue is, when we do something like this, if it appears that it's going to be temporary for a short period, we have to also take into consideration what it's going to do to that unemployment fund.
Yep.
Well, we'll just have to pay the unemployment amount out of the payroll account, because right now, we're paying time and a half, a half the amount of work to be done, so I'm spending salary faster.
Subhoofed.
Is there a second, Mr. Maderas? Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I'll hold.
Now, bids, we're coming to bids, and we have two from Mr. Webster. The council ready for a motion on this?
Yes. You need two bids, you need two motions on this.
Yes, that is the one.
I saw move.
Well, hold on.
Need a motion to waive the 5% surety.
Yes.
And to approve.
And to, and to award, yeah, award the contract. Can't roll it into one motion?
Yeah.
And waive the surety and move.
And there is one other, there is one other issue here, that there is actually only $30,000 left in this account, so it is short $2,365, so we would ask that it come out of your account.
Well, let's make that determination when the payment comes, and see where our balances are. I would like to do that.
Okay. Mr. Koster's made two motions. One is that we have waived the 5% bid surety amount.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Second motion was, Donald did not vote.
Are you impressed?
Okay, the second motion.
So what is that, another vote?
Well, as soon as someone asks for the vote, I'll tell you what it's going to say.
I'm asking.
Come on, Don.
Well, no, no, all of the opposed. No, you didn't ask about opposed or abstentions.
Well, I'm sorry about that, but next time, I'll be more alert. But just raise your hand and say I'm opposed. Okay, next motion is to approve the low bid.
J.C. Bennett.
To 32, 365.
You need a motion? I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I think the.
Any further?
Well, we're over, yeah, the discussion should be, we're over the price that was agreed to. $30,000 was what the amount was, that this was one of those things that went through the Budget Committee, it discussed with them, allowing this to happen, because this was taking money from an unused account to do that, and they didn't have a problem. Now, we're getting into spending money from other accounts to furnish the rest of this to the tune of, it's only $2,365. I have a problem with that, because I think we're going beyond what the expectation was, that this could come in at under $30,000.
Councilor Bowlin, I will take responsibility for that. We originally had $33,114 and, and change, I believe it was. When Mr. Webster and I met, we, we thought the bid was going to come in at $30,000. We elected to take $3,000, $3,114, and transferred that against the trash account. The bid price came in higher than what we had anticipated it to be, which was $32,365, and that's why that account is short. It is not short, because there was $33,000 in that, in that salt, in that overtime account, I guess it was. And it would have been there, but we moved the $3,000 to cover the shortfall in the trash last month, so, you know.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to second.
It's handled, motion just.
Okay, all those in favor of that, vote, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Mr. Bowlin is opposed. Okay, get that straight, Louise. All righty, now, next, request award for Public Works water pipes.
Motion to approve the low bid in the amount of $5,187.58.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, request award, Town Administrator.
Madam President, as you may recall, we had a discussion a while back. We have finally been able to get Gifford and Barry. We have two bids, and you have the bid amounts. However, there is a wild card in the Barry of $500 in reproduction costs that could significantly increase the difference in the bids. Gifford has said all reproduction costs are covered in their bid price. Also, Gifford is assigning more senior personnel to the project. We have an intern being assigned by Barry to this project, and it's very close, it's more subjective than anything else. Both firms are more than capable of performing the work. I mean, obviously, the intern is not going to be just out doing this on his own, he's going to be supervised, but they're, the personnel are much more senior with Gifford.
However, the alternative, the alternative would be Mr. Barry working on the account himself, if you let him vary.
Well, Mr. Barry, well, Mr. Gifford would work on, on the account, and so would Mr. Barry. They're both going to be involved. These are not big firms, you know, so when I, when I call someone there, usually I end up talking to Mr. Barry or Mr. Gifford. It's, it's not like I'm shutting off to another person.
Motion to award the bid to the Gifford Design Group of further recommendation of the Town Administrator.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, Gerald Lee Napolea, request authorization to do title work for tax sale.
I think I.
Yes.
If I may speak on this, Madam President, this came up with the clerk and I. Apparently, the same company has been doing the title work for many, many years, and it may be that there's no one else out there that wants to do it, but there are other title companies in Rhode Island now. There is a little bit of competition, so it's my suggestion that we should go out to bid on that to see if there is anybody out there who we want. So the reason for two years was to allow some economies of scale continuity that somebody would know wouldn't be a, just a year-to-year contract, but that's somewhat arbitrary, if you want to go longer or shorter.
Motion to advertise for an RFP seeking the competitive bid for tax title work for the tax sale properties to be placed after July 1st.
Motion to second for a, for a, for a long.
Two years.
Two years? Could we also advertise, because the price fits a three-year contract?
Yeah, I just want to say the same thing. I think.
I'll amend my motion to state two or three years, to see if there's a difference in price.
Yeah.
If there, if there isn't, we can always go with the two and see how they work out, because to lock into a three-year deal using a different title company, you know, we.
Who's going to prepare the request for proposals?
I will.
Thank you. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Town Administrator.
Wanted to remind everybody that Town Hall will be open on Saturday, July 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 in the afternoon for first quarter tax payments. This allows people to take advantage of the 10-day extension period for their property taxes, to come in on a Saturday outside of normal business hours. Also, to remind everybody that we do have the overnight lockbox on the outside of Town Hall, which anybody can drop a payment on at any time. Probably the most significant thing, activity is going to take place beginning July 2nd, when a new trash hauler begins his contract, which is Patriot. They begin July 2nd, and to add a little of a twist to it, Wednesday, July 4th is a holiday. So people who are used to being picked up on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, their trash collection day gets shifted back one day. So collections will be made one day late, and will continue Thursday through Saturday for the holiday week. So those who are on Wednesday will get collected on Thursday, Thursday on Friday, Friday on We also, if anybody, you know, we anticipate, like anything else, this is a change, or we may have some problems. We ask for people's patience. If they encounter any problems, people can call Department of Public Works at 625-6760, and Patriot has a toll-free number, which is 1-800-762-0244. There will also be a monthly metal collection that is held the third Friday of each month, and this allows up to three metal items per household, and obviously, we will be setting the, the Saturday waste collections for fall and spring. This letter is on the town website, it is being sent out to the local media as a press release. We have already notified the media on both of these other items.
That's it. That's it. Council announcements, comments, and questions?
Just wanted to remind people that Tuesday, July 9th is a special election for the Charter Review Commission. I got a press release today mentioning it. There are three special polling.
To 10.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Tuesday, July 10th, and there are three polling places, the high school, Town Hall, and North Tiverton Fire Station.
Right.
And polls are open 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and this is to elect the Charter Review Commission.
Do we know which districts are voting and which locations?
Yes, let me guess, you have them better than I.
Okay, I had one question. Did we ever receive applications for full-time town treasurer? And where, what is the status of that?
I'm sorry?
Full-time town treasurer applications, did they, whatever happened?
They were given to the Personnel Board.
Personnel Board doesn't seem to have them.
We signed, they signed for them, don't they? They signed for them.
They weren't many, I forgot how many it was.
Two, maybe?
Yeah. I forgot, it's so long ago.
Mr. Almeida comes, we will follow up.
We will find out.
Okay. Counselor, listen.
Nothing except exactly.
We have now reached.
Madam President, and this one's on conference with the council.
I'm not involved in the election.
Charleston. Okay, I got something else.
I would just like to bring forward to the council's attention that the nation has been focused this past week on nine firefighters that were killed in Charleston, South Carolina. I'd like to let you know that members of this department, at their own time, their own expense, did travel to Charleston and attended the memorial services on Friday. Also, there was another firefighter killed this week in New York City. Several members, again, at their own time, their own expense, will be traveling down. I'd just like to know that they are trying to do their best to represent the town of Tiverton in, in all of these horrific instances.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks very much for the information.
I'd also, while the chief is here, like to give him a pat on the back. We had a fire down the street, which you were notified of the other day. I was impressed with the job the chief took in notifying the residents of what to be wary of in light of the fire and the damage at, at their house. He went over and above, and I know he does this all the time, but it's nice to be able to see it in person when someone does it. I think he should be acknowledged, and he also brought it to our attention about the firemen, and it was Tiverton who brought it to the governor's attention to have the flags flown at half-staff, so he really has done a yeoman's job in making sure that his, his fire department is, is well-respected.
So we can give you a formal attaboy? And let the minutes so reflect that the council gave him a formal attaboy.
No transfers.
But no carryovers. Okay, we've reached the.
Motion to enter into executive session under 4246582 litigation.
42465A2 litigation.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
Remain in executive session under 42465A1. Request to amend contract. Town Administrator, notice given.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Oh, okay.
Remain in executive session under 42465A2. Collected bargaining IBPO contract.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
And one further item, 42465A5, acquisition or disposition of town help property.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
Abstained.
Abstained.
I've received nothing on it. I don't know what that's all about.
That's okay.
And, and for the record, regarding the Personnel matter with the Administrator, that the Administrator has been informed in writing of this and his opportunity to have it enclosed.
Yes.
Have, have that noted in the record. He has elected to have it enclosed, actually.
Yes, he has.
Okay.